Yep. All right. I'll call this meeting to order. This is a regular, this is a regular session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona. It's being held on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 at 7:00 PM at the Council Chambers here in Bisbee, Arizona. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanita, Juanetta Hill?
President.
Councilmember Johnny Jacaminos excused. Councilmember Frank Davis.
President.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Soweed is excused. Mayor Protem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Stephen Hawken, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Matt Gurney, Public Works Director, Doug Taylor, City Planner, Alberti Chavat, Police Chief, Jim Richardson, Acting Fire Chief, Joe Estes, City Attorney.
Thank you, everybody. It's good to see some more of the audience tonight. So, starting off, before I'm holding silence, I mean, as much as what's happening around the world in Ukraine and just some of the local shootings and stuff that have gone on in our local country, I just think tonight that after last night, we ought to take a moment and give thanks to all the people that showed up to really stop a catastrophe that could have been last night with fire and for all of our first responders, all our firefighters, law enforcement, and everyone else. It was quite a turnout. We put the call out for help and they just show up. So, take a moment, just give thanks to them and continue to keep us safe. Thank you. Thank you. We'll do a pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, tonight for, I had no proclamations or announcements. I had kind of handled our thankfulness to our first responders, and I don't want to take anything away from our city manager's report, I see it there, but I also wanted to make mention of the wonderful call between library and it's basically being nominated for one of the most prestigious awards of the country, actually. That's pretty amazing. Fifteen different libraries have been nominated and there's like anywhere from three to five for finalists, and I'll let the city manager, while we finish the entire.
Go ahead, that's good. I think he appreciates it coming.
Well, you know, named as a finalist for the National Merit of Museums and Library Services. It's a very prestigious award. It's only given out to very few every, every year. There were thirty finalists, there's fifteen libraries and fifteen museums. We were named as one of the, one of the libraries, of course. Going down the list, most of them are pretty major libraries, they have a lot of resources, much bigger than us, couple of smaller ones, but really, this is quite an honor and I just wanted to recognize this is what dedication of our city employees do, whether it's providing services to our citizens and what they can read and watch, or what they do to keep our, our streets safe and everything else that they do. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to, to all the employees there at the library and we're just hoping that they'll win the final, final reward. So, thank you very much for, for their dedication. All right. Call the public. Do you have one signed up? No one signed up? So, if you'd like to come up, full name and basic area of where you live, that would be great. Go ahead, have a three minutes.
Hello. My name is Nolan Gett and other than Warren. I'm here today to encourage everybody in the community to vote no on the home poll option, which will be on the ballot, August 2nd, 2022. I think my, my major point is, is that in the world, there are governments that are not exactly good. And I think the one that comes to mind right now is probably Russia, unfortunately. You know, imagine for a second if you found yourself to be a citizen in, in Russia, would it be right to support that government? The government is shelling civilians. So, no, I don't think that it would be right to support the government. My point is, is that I don't think that Steve here has any expectations of a military junta, or I don't think he wants total control. But I do think that Bisbee is a really, really weird and crazy and interesting place. And I think that people just, people in Bisbee don't care about what goes on here. People don't care about what's going on here.
Everybody put your hands in the air. Vote no because you just don't care. To vote yes would be a nightmare, a nightmare just like the current mayor. All right, everybody, peace. All right. Moving on to general business. We have two accounts payable. I want to have a debate, a motion for accounts payable.
I'm looking to pay accounts payable in the amount of $138,099.
And ten cents?
I'll second that.
Okay. I believe that's, yeah. So, we have a motion and a second to pay accounts payable. Any questions and comments? Seeing a mail motion and a second to pay accounts payable in the amount of $138,099 and ten cents. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number two, this is the approval of the consent agenda. We have four items tonight, one approval of the minutes. We have a park and facility and right-of-way use permit for the continuation of the Bisbee Saturday Market, Farmers Market in Lower Vista Park. We have a special hand liquor license submitted by the friends of Bisbee Amblesheller and another liquor license from the Hitching Post. Do I have any items that need to be pulled for further discussion?
I have a question about item D. Is that meaningful?
Okay, we'll pull item D. So, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through C.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items A through C.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda, items A through C. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair determines ayes have it, so move. Moving on to item D of the consent agenda. Go ahead.
I just wondered, since they're functioning as a bar already, what, do they not have a liquor license? I just wondered what's going on with this application because they're open, they're serving people liquor right now.
We have.
Does anybody know?
We will. This was added at the last minute and is it an extension of premises?
It's not an extension, it's a change of ownership.
Okay.
Is what it is.
So, okay, thanks, Al. That makes sense to me.
Okay.
I note, it turns item D, approval of a liquor license application to the Bisbee Chute House Center located at 316 Piraumis, Bisbee, Arizona. Second?
A motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda, item D. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair moves. Terms, ayes have it, so move. The two seconds there to get through this, continue this consent agenda. And we will move on to item number three. This will be discussion of possible approval of ordinance O-2204, authorizing the sale and transfer of city property located adjacent to and west of 104D and 144 Lachlan Avenue and the existing access road 140 and 142 Lachlan Avenue. Mr. Taylor?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This was, this item was approved on, well, was before you on March 15th and Mayor and Council unanimously voted to accept the bid from Mr. and Mrs. Hausman of $16,700 for the piece of property. I don't know if you want me to read the, the ordinance?
Well, this is the second, this was the second reading. I think we voted on the intent, so if anybody has any questions, I think we're gonna, we can suspend for that. Any questions about approving the actual ordinance? Seeing on, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance O-22-04, authorizing the sale and transfer of city property located adjacent to and west of 104D and 144 Lachlan Avenue and the existing access road 140, 142 Lachlan Avenue.
I'll say, oh, go ahead, second? We have a motion, a second, to approve ordinance O-2204 as listed on the agenda. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. All right. Moving on to whole business, number four. This is discussion of possible approval of ordinance O-2206. This is accepting the transfer of real property from Southeast Arizona Revolutions, uh, Rev- I tell you, well, that's about three hours' sleep due, no sleep. LLC located at 105 F Street, Bisbee. Mr. City Manager, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Yes, the property involved is actually 105 E Street, and I know the mayor is functioning on three hours of sleep because he kept me up late, he kept me up early. So, 105 E Street is located at the south end of E Street, directly adjacent to Highway 80 in Saginaw. This purchase was made by Southeast Arizona Renovations LLC, and the house was in kind of rough condition. The step-up, the NACCO crew went in and renovated the building. It is not 100% complete yet, but it's close enough that Southeast Arizona Renovations would like to transfer the property into the city's ownership so that it can be placed in the workforce housing program. So, the staff recommendation is to accept the transfer of ownership so that we can sell it to a deserving workforce member.
Thank you. Another workforce housing, we're moving forward in that, in that way. Any questions or comments?
I've been over there and seen progress. It's looking great and Saginaw is looking better every time something like that happens. Yeah, very good. They're doing a great job and this is a good thing for, for the city.
I just might comment that this is a piece of property that, quite frankly, fell into our laps. One, one of our, the former owner of the residence had moved out and the house had been sitting back there for some time. One morning, I walked into the office and Grace at the front desk said, "Here's a piece of property for you to buy." And she handed me the half of the sewer and garbage bill that, that the ratepayer returns with their check, and written on the little half of the postcard was, "This property for sale, $35,000 in the photo." So, so I handed it over to Southeast Arizona Renovations and she made a phone call and the next thing I know, she had purchased the property and we were able to get a recently retired construction worker to go to work and take care of doing renovations on the property. So, this one's actually turning around pretty quickly and this will be the third one and we'll have another one probably not, if not the next meeting, meeting after, that we'll start the process of sale. It's a property we already own over on Cochise Road that we're in the process of building a small house. So, so anyway, again, staff recommends the, or the first property.
Yeah. Anything else you want to make up for the motion?
Okay, I move to that we approve ordinance O-22-06, accepting the transfer of real property from Southeast Arizona Renovations LLC located at 105 E Street, Bisbee.
Second?
I have a motion, a second, to approve the transfer of real property from Southeast Arizona Renovations. After we apply F, gee, E Street, that's right. Looks like F on mine. E, E Street, Bisbee. Let's go roll call, thanks.
Councilmember Hill? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes five zero, so move. All right. We'll now move into new business. This is item number five. This will be the discussion of possible approval of the updated designer review board application packet. Again, City Planner, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The design review board members, various of them, had requested that we look into a new application process, more updated, more modern, maybe, and really based on issues that we had seen coming up. I asked Deputy City Clerk Nina Williams to head this up, and I have kept my hands out of action, done an amazing job. There has been some feedback from various members individually and even some drawings by Mr. Lepley, who is on the board, that are on the packet. We are asking for you to approve this submission and, or this, this application for submission and so that the process can be more streamlined and more effective.
All right, open for discussion.
Well, as a Protem member of the designer review board, this has been a while in coming and it's greatly needed, and we want to make it as easy as we can for people to apply for the permission to do what they want to do on these homes over in Old Bisbee, the historic district.
I concur with that after spending quite a few meetings with that myself when I was on it and also here, when I was executive also. I think a well-spelled out what we would like would go a long ways, allow people to not be hitting that gray zone of, well, what exactly do I contribute? So, I'm glad to see this. We'll, if we need to tweak it down the road to see how it works, that's always available. So, nothing's written in stone, but I think this is a, a very good first start and I will ask the clerk to make one little note on, on the page where it is, DRB application submitted checklist. If you look down at the full item, there's architectural building elevations, designs included, and the dimensions is DE, I'm not much of a speller, but I think it's Spelkong. Does that look right? So, before we put it out, just hate to word you, but should be D-I-M-E-N-S-I-O-N, dimensions. All right, that's something I noticed, that was pretty minor. Any other comments, questions? So, take the motion.
I move to approve the updated designer review board application packet.
I'll second that. We have a motion, a second, to update the designer review board application packet. Roll call.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein? Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes five zero, so move. Moving right along, this is new business item number six, discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-2208. This is authorizing the sale and transfer of city property located primarily south and across the right-of-way from 125 Star Avenue, a vacant parcel described as the north half of APN 1036B, 248 lots 19 and 20. You're up again.
Go ahead, you get rid of me. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This was also part of the March 15th auction that, that was held, and Mayor and Council unanimously voted to accept the bid from Mr. and Mrs. Burkett in the amount of $18,000. And this is number one, I believe, of, of the appearances of this.
So, this is the malt notice of intent, and we'll see that again next, in two weeks. We have questions? Comments? Okay. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-228, authorizing the sale and transfer of city property located primarily south and across the right-of-way from 125 Star Avenue, a vacant parcel described as the north half of APN 10360, 249 lots 19 and 20.
I'll second that.
Motion, a second, over item number six under the new business for ordinance O-2208. Okay.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes five zero, so move. This will be item under new business seven, discussion of possible approval of the general fund reserve policy. This is Ms. Carrie, our Finance Director. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a general fund reserve policy, which sets an amount the city intends to keep in the fund balance. The 1.4 million in this policy would cover about three months of basic operational expenses in the event there was a disruption in revenue. Having a reserve policy is good practice and recommended by our auditors and financial advisors.
All right. Open for discussion, I'm the Counsel. Any comments?
Sounds like a good idea.
Well, this was recommended by, by our auditors, that's why we hire them, and obviously it's a, a good, a good thing. I don't know why we haven't had it.
I have many more if you, if any more policies.
That's for sure. All right. Seeing a more further discussion while entertaining a motion here.
I move to approve the City of Bisbee's general fund reserve policy.
Second?
Motion, a second, to approve the general fund reserve policy for the City of Bisbee. I guess we can just take all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, so move. All right. This is agenda item number eight. Dispatched them a wire. This is discussion of possible approval of purchasing three portable AED defibrillators and a life-pack CRT trainer for the City of Bisbee to be placed in different departments from the AED one-stop shop using American Rescue Plan Fund Acts. Mr. Richardson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're asking for the approval of the three portable AEDs and a life-pack trainer. Robert Klein actually got these quotes for us, Lieutenant Klein, all those, I haven't had them speak to you. I did not bring the quote, I believe it was around $6,000.
Just batch up three more we've already.
Yes, just an additional three that we forgot about. The swimming pool, the library, the annex. And then a second one for New City Hall for upstairs.
Here, maybe until we get there.
Yeah, here, yeah.
Until we get there.
And I believe the pool is only going to be seasonal, so we have that one floating around as well. I think Lieutenant Klein said he had about thirty people trained and on the use of the AED. I think he's got thirty or forty more to go. So, we're asking for the approval of purchases out of American Rescue.
Yes.
Just a couple of comments to add. The, these are identical to the units that you purchased a couple of months ago.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry.
The funny, this will be transferred out of the American Rescue Plan money that we're still, we still have available to us. And also, the chief mentioned training. That training is open to you as well, as members of council. So, the next time we announce a training session, we will be sure to get the word out to you. Even though when we bought the first batch, I was told that all I gotta do is listen and it'll do everything for you. There's nothing like going through the process to take the intimidation out of using and hopefully none of us ever use one time. You know, there might be one time in your life when you can save somebody else's life. So, it's probably better to get trained. So, anyway, we'll let you know and please take advantage of it if you can. Sorry, Jim.
It's okay. I was just wanting to add, the trainer that we're going to purchase with it is identical to the AEDs themselves. Only thing it doesn't do is shock you. So, you actually get to pull it out, play with it, put your hands on it. These, the real machines, if you open them, it just costs money. So, there's no expense in taking a chance on that, so.
For 600 bucks for the trainer, it can go a long ways because refractor courses are also needed after a year, you're starting to lose some of the.
We're going to try to make this an annual thing to refresh everybody on, on the use of the AEDs, and it could save one of our lives.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing on, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of three portable AED defibrillators and a life-pack CRT trainer, City of Bisbee, to be placed in different departments from AED one-stop shops using archiphones.
I'll second that. We have a motion, a second, to purchase three more AED, AED defibrillator and one life-pack CRT trainer for the amount of $6,700. Roll call.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes five zero, so move. Moving on, this is item number nine. This will be approval request for proposals to replace the senior center roof of 300 Collins Avenue. I'm sorry, Collins Avenue. Mr. Matthew, Public Board.
So, pretty straightforward, we're just asking for approval to go out for proposals, seal bids, to replace the senior center roof. We've had Logan Dodd has talked with different contractors, just getting their opinion on it, and then we're, and from that opinion, they've looked at it and we want to go out for bid to replace the 5,656 square foot roof.
Biggest city hall?
Yes, it is. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
This is a call that we didn't make lightly. We've been talking about this for most of the last 12 months because we weren't. We wanted to make absolute sure that replaceable is the required fix because, as you see, it's a very, very large, an imbecile roof, and it's a very slight pitch. But it is the original roof on that building, so it's been around for a very long time. Based on the information we received from local roofing experts, so we believe that the right call at this point is to replace the roof.
Are we requesting what type of material to do it, saying?
Um, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna ask to replace it.
Any other questions?
Question. I know that, um, there's mold and internal damage to the, uh, center itself.
Can I, would you pull your mic up?
I said, I know that there is mold and internal damage to the, uh, walls within the, the center. So, does, I know this is just for the roof, but are we going to be addressing the internal damage as well in the same time?
Yes, we had to do this before we do anything with, with internal, because we didn't want to do this and not get the roof in time and be right back where we are now. So, uh, we, yes, we have, we've gotten quotes and we've had that all tested and, uh, we're ready to move forward as soon as this is done.
Anything else? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the request for proposal to replace the senior center roof at three hundred Collins Road.
Second?
We have a motion in a second to approve the request for proposal to replace the senior center roof at three hundred Collins Road. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Uh, the ayes have it, so move.
Thank you.
Your bet. Thank you. All right, item number ten. This is a discussion of possible approval of ordinance O dash twenty-two oh seven. It's an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, authorizing the sale and transfer of certain property located at three hundred Campbell Street, City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona, under the City's Workforce Housing Initiative, authorizing and taking of all other actions necessary uh, for the transaction contemplated by this ordinance and declaring an emergency. Um, let's go ahead with, uh, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, this, uh, is the second of residential property that has been renovated, uh, for sale in the Workforce Housing Program. It's located in Warren on Campbell Street, um, and it actually has been finished for quite some time. Um, part of the process of breaking into a new program means that, uh, uh, we're learning as much as the people who end up buying the property are, are learning. And what we found out is that there are some lead times that are very long. You know, right now, uh, you know, getting an appraisal is, is not an easy task. Uh, and you wait a long time to get one, and the process of, of, uh, the buyer actually getting his financing or her financing settled is also right now taking a very long time, so. Um, this one's taking a little bit longer, but I'm hoping with the one that we approved just a little while ago, uh, that we've learned enough from that that we'll be able to make this process perhaps take about half the amount of time that this one is taking. So, anyway, again, uh, it is, um, uh, part of the Workforce Housing Program. Uh, names were drawn out of a hat by lottery. Um, the, the, the person whose name was pulled out of the hat just happens to be one of our own city employees. So we're very happy to be able to, uh, see one of our own people in our workforce be able to purchase a home, uh, so that they can both live and work in Bisbee. Um, staff recommends approval.
And just for, uh, public's knowledge, this is a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar sale. Correct, and would you just tell us exactly the declaring emergency part of it?
I can explain that.
Yeah?
So, yeah, typically, for example, when there, there's issues with financing and funding and closings and things, similar to when the city does bonds and bond issuances, it's common that you issue a declaration of emergency because of the, the time constraints with regard to those. So it's very common in situations like this and closing to have that declaration of emergency because that allows it to move expeditious, expeditiously and be able to close on time, uh, because you've got market issues with interest rates adjustments and things like that, that if you don't hit those deadlines, it, it impacts the entire process.
Right, just wanted to clarify that for the public. We hate to see interest rates rise on and make this thing fall apart.
Yeah.
All right, just wanted it all out there. Any other questions, comments?
That was my question.
Oh, okay. I beat you to it.
Yes, you did.
For once. All right, uh, I, um, will make the mo, well, I'll, it's a long motion.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay.
I move for a motion. Ordinance zero dash two two zero dash, dash, zero seven, and ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona, authorizing the sale and transfer of certain property located at three hundred Campbell Street, City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona, under the City's Workforce Housing Initiative, authorizing the taking and all other actions necessary for the consummation of the transaction contemplated by this ordinance and declaring it an emergency.
I'll second that, and we have a motion in a second, as shown on the agenda, item number ten. Voca.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Moving on. It's the item number ten, uh, eleven. This is a possible discussion of possible approval to advertise for bids for a contractor or City Hall. Glory hallelujah. Go ahead, Mr. Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will remind you that, um, a year ago, uh, when, when I agreed to come back to work, uh, one of the, there, there were two or three things that were of, of, I think, to of utmost importance, so we get moving on. Uh, you'll recall in that discussion, one of those was getting City Hall rebuilt finally. And so, um, staff took the bow by the horns, uh, and we got the area prepared, we got the building demoed. Uh, and about, uh, ninety days or a hundred days ago, uh, you approved a contract with Mr. Albert Hopper, uh, and his team to do the architecture and engineering, uh, to design the new City Hall. I, I put a high bar on completion of architecture, perhaps to the complaint of a few of the architects who did the project, but, um, not only was Mr. Hopper willing to comply with the ninety days, um, he met it. And so, uh, his team in cooperation with city staff, and of course you've had some opportunities to look at, uh, the drawings in the last few weeks, and of course, uh, some drawings that are so small you can't really read them, or attached to your agenda packet, uh, are identical to the twenty-four by thirty-six drawings that, that you saw a couple of weeks ago, so. Mr. Hopper did, um, also provide us, um, yesterday with an estimate of cost. And of course, an estimate of cost is as good as the bids that come later. And, uh, just in, in rounding to the nearest ten thousand, um, it's three point two million, uh, which, as we discussed in our strategy meeting, uh, we had resources up to three point four million uh, at our disposal to make this, make this project work, so. Um, now, what we're asking for is the opportunity to go out and solicit bids from building contractors, uh, to, uh, do what you've seen on these drawings. Uh, Mr. Hopper worked with Mr. Estes to prepare all bid documents, those are complete, we're ready to hit the street. Um, with your approval, we'll be doing that at the earliest opportunity, so. Uh, at this point, uh, oh, and I might want to mention, Mr. Hopper is here tonight, just in case there's any questions for him. Uh, but at this point, all we're asking for is the opportunity to, uh, hit the street and bid.
What would be the timeline for going out?
We're going to, uh,
Not going out, but.
Set a deadline for bids to be returned, no later than the NMA.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I said, that's a, uh, term.
Um, well, professional building contractors should be able to, uh, deal with that, I know you've got one sitting next to you, he might be better prepared to answer that question.
Well, yeah, I mean, they'll, they'll have a staff, that, that's what they do, we're, we're working through it. This isn't a really super complicated building yet, we're on the street.
Got a lot of little special features, but, uh, but it's not rocket science, but it's, it's going to serve us well for many, many years to come, so I'm very appreciative of, of Al, and I want to thank you personally for the dedication to take, to do this in ninety days. I was amazed, and, um, this shows you no amount how much work there really is, I saw the real set of plans, it's this thick, and it is, I forget how many pages, you can remind me, but.
A lot.
A lot, yeah. So, because it's very taut, it shows you every nail goes in at a forty-five degree angle with everything else, so, so, anyway. Um, it's, it's, it's really quite something, and so, um, I'm more than happy, excited that maybe we can go out and actually start getting some bids in and seeing exactly where, where we will stand and bring it back to council for, uh, for, uh, going forward after the NMA.
Mr. Mayor, just, just one other detail, uh, in the bid documents, we're expecting completion, um, within three hundred days of the notice to proceed.
Okay, so, all right, I'm trying to figure it out in my head tonight.
By the time the bids come back and we go through all the processes, assuming that we award a contract, um, you'll probably be cutting the ribbon somewhere around the independent state next year.
There you go, and that'd be great, fireworks will, uh, what I don't want to say about fireworks this year.
Right now.
But I will, I will maybe for next year, well, double, double down.
The good news is we might not be able to get any.
Am I? Anyway, all right, uh, no questions, besides my objections.
Okay, so I I move to approve the request to advertise for the bid, for bids for contractor for City Hall.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to approve to advertise for bids for a contractor for City Hall. I want to, what's vote on this one?
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. So moved.
You have no idea how much we thank you.
We thank you for moving forward with this, it's been sitting for far too long.
So, and later on, this building will become an animal shelter pretty quick. We've already been hit up about the other half, and so, we gotta get out of here, so this would be great. All good things come in, in the end, so. All right, well, let's move on to item twelve. Let's see, is this, no, this is, yes. Item twelve, discussion of possible approval of a subscriber agreement between the City of Bisbee and CCOM for regional niberode communications. Yeah, City Manager. Uh, Al, do you want to get that over to you?
No, no, we'll, we'll, we'll give the chief his, uh, opportunity in just a moment.
Okay.
Thank you one more time, uh, we, uh, have been, as, as you're all well aware, we've been dealing with a lot of staff shortages in the last uh, year or so, um, and even, uh, in the cases where we've been able to hire folks, um, it has been difficult to retain them, um, for a multitude of reasons that we probably could discuss for several hours, but that would be off the subject at the moment. The reality is, is that, um, we probably have better options out there, and, uh, so for the last few weeks, uh, we have been examining one of those options, and that is to, uh, flip the switch, because we have a nine-one-one, uh, public safety, uh, terminal at our, uh, police station, which can, with a flip of a switch, be turned over to CCOM, which is the regional dispatcher, dispatch center in, um, uh, in Sierra Vista, so, uh, Chief and I have been weighing options and having discussions with Mr. Klein, the Director, and, uh, so we're coming to you with a, uh, with a proposal. Um, the, the last thing I'll say about, I'll let Albert, uh, make the rest of it, um, is, uh, one of the things we gain on this is, um, is cost reduction. For the contract that's before you tonight, uh, for the hours that they will be dispatching for us, which is, um, nights and weekends, we continue to dispatch during the day, um, the actual reduction in our budgeted cost is going to be a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Um, so, it is not only, um, something that we, we, we get to retain uh, employees who are well-trained and able to do this work more consistently, um, we also see a reduction in costs, you notice I don't say savings because we don't save money, we just reduce costs. So, anyway, Albert, would you like to add? And Mr. Klein is here, by the way.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council, members of the public. Um, as Mr. Park explained, uh, this will be a, uh, cost reduction, uh, pretty significant. We have been relying on CCOM for the last approximately four weeks, uh, for night operations and weekend operations. We are continuing to dispatch for the City of Bisbee for police and fire, Monday through Friday, between the hours of eight AM and six PM. Uh, at six PM, the dispatcher flips a switch for nine-one-one, uh, the radios, um, we transfer the phone lines, and when somebody calls the police department on two-two-six-one, it rings at CCOM, just like it rang at police department, and they're able to handle that call. Um, we're still working through some of the bugs of, uh, uh, radio operations, um, specifically for the fire department to get them to, uh, a more adequate, uh, delivery system. Um, the county did get a, a huge grant in the form of CAREZAC money, I believe, to give a, uh, alerting notification system in each fire station, is going to be installed, I think, in, uh, six months or so. Do you think you're going to start on that?
I did today.
Okay, I'll let Mike come up. That's going to help quite a bit as well. There's some, a little bit of growing pains as we change over and as things happen, and not everything is done exactly the same way as we did it, and not, it, I don't think it ever will be, uh, but I, I think that, uh, the product that we're receiving at this point has been, uh, they've met our expectations, um, we're getting the, the messages that we need, um, and they're, they're, the service is being provided to us. Most of the time, the public doesn't even know whether or not they're talking to Bisbee or somebody else, they're just taking information, loading that information into the, uh, computerated dispatch system and, and pushing that on to whatever agency needs to handle it. So, um, I am, I am more pleased than I expected myself to be at this point with this, um, and, uh, I, I don't have, I don't have any complaints that aren't small, small things that we can't work on, uh, agency to agency to, to correct those things. Again, there's some things that a big dispatch center can't provide, little finite things to that we're used to having. Uh, but it's okay, some of those things we can do ourselves without any issue, it's, it's not that big a deal, so I, I really think that it is, uh, the, the cost reduction is significant enough that this makes good fiscal and financial sense for the city to go, uh, this direction, so. Um, I support it, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Klein, uh, the Director of CCOM, uh, to say a few words, and then if you have questions of us, we'll be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
Good evening, US Mayor, members of council. I, I am here mainly to just answer questions for you, if you have any. Uh, as has already been explained, there's a number of benefits, uh, for your city by joining CCOM. I can, if you're not aware of what CCOM's all about, I can certainly answer that, I can, uh, I can.
Give us a.
Okay. CCOM was established in July of twenty eighteen as a result of an agreement between the County of Cochise and the City of Sierra Vista. Uh, we formed an intergovernmental agreement between the two principals, county and the city, and then from that point, and I had the established the board of directors for whom I work as, as the executive director. After that, we sought subscribers, essentially all the P-SAPS are the public safety answering points in the region, in Cochise County. Just as an overview, there are eighty-one P-SAPS in the State of Arizona. Just as an overview, there are 81 PSAPs in the state of Arizona. And in the old days, so to speak, just about every fire department, every police department had their own own PSAP, all supported by the state 911 office. The state's trying to get away from having so many out there, and they're pushing toward regionalization so that they only have to manage a certain number. This is the first truly regional center in the state. In the big cities, they have combined where a couple of cities have gotten together and held hands, so to speak, like Tucson, Pima County get together, but this is a regional one that's by nature just that. So we're setting the trend in that regard in the state. Another thing that we do, and again, we set up in July of 18, and there has been a significant learning curve in that time because, as Chief alluded to, everybody had their own way to skin in the proverbial cat. And what we tried to do is blend that and come up with a good standard, good professional standard that could satisfy everybody's needs. One example I'll give you for that, many departments had their own 10 codes over the years. It's radio codes. When you have regional centers, there's no way my folks could, nor would I ever expect them to remember all those codes. So a simple change that we do is we go plain language. Okay? And believe it or not, that's difficult for the trained cop or firefighter out there who, for their whole career, has been talking numbers and getting along just fine. So now if they relax and talk numbers, then we're over here scratching our heads, wondering, what's he talking about, and we got to ask for clarification. That's some of the bugs that we're working out, some of the fine tuning that we're doing. Just the other day, it came up specifically with Bisbee, one of the Bisbee officers was the, we have a practice that if we don't hear from somebody in a certain period of time, we start paying them, calling out for them. It's an officer safety thing. They were, "Okay, okay, well, all right." We're checking on them. So those are the kind of things we're working out right now. Okay? CCOM is a busy place. Based on the 2021 year-end report, an average of 519 phone calls a day come into the center. Now bear in mind, I should have 20 dispatchers, and I'm at 35% myself. So the problems you're experiencing in your town are not unique. They're painful for all of us. This Tucson-Pima County center is at 38%. DPS's Flagstaff Center had to be shut down because they couldn't. Took a call from Washington State, they're at 32% staffing. So we're all experiencing this, and why I bring that up in this forum? You know, you're painfully aware of what you're suffering with. This is a force multiplier. CCOM is a force multiplier where we bring all this together, and we can handle a lot of different agencies that way. We're helping. We've got Wilcox before, when Chief Hatfield had some issues that he needed to deal with back when the COVID was strong. We had to help a lot of people to get bailed out of that. So it's a force multiplier in that regard. We have a state-of-the-art facility, and if you bear with me, I'll give you a ccom911.org, that website. On that website, if you go into that at your leisure, there is this very 1 minute 39-second vignette that is a video of one of our calls being taken. You will, in that vignette, you can see a classic example of a typical call in CCOM from the perspective of a camera off the dispatcher's shoulder, so you will see their center. I will tell you, as you're remembering me and watching that, that is 1/8 of the center. We have eight standalone consoles. And what you see there is 1 of 8. We're also doing another thing right now, so I'm using National Guard. It's turned out to be a trend-setting thing in that the call that they took from Washington State was a product that they've been hearing about the Guard. What we're doing there is we're bringing in guardsmen, and we're training them in 911 communication techniques and skill sets. The rationale being that blossoms inside the Guard, that becomes a contagion amongst Guard state to state. And now when an entity in whatever state calls for Guard help, there's a potential of those Guard people having training in 911 communications. And whether they use the same Vesta system we use, or the CAD system we use, they understand the technical issues around 911 communication and the challenges that come with that. So we're doing that. We are the only entity in the state of Arizona that employs the Pro-QA protocols. Our folks go to National Academy of Emergency Dispatch and receive an individual certification, their own certification, to employ these standards. And what that allows them to do, what that empowers them to do, is give pre-arrival instructions on police, fire, and EMS callers as the help is coming. We all know, you know this already, that the dispatchers are literally the tip of the spear when you have an emergency situation. They are the person you call. This allows them to not just take your information and say, "Help's coming," and hang up. That does not happen anymore. Now, we stay on the phone with you. We get to a certain point, this called a send level, if you will. The questions continue, but the help is already on its way. And then through the CAD, that unit, be police, fire, EMS, is being constantly updated as they're traveling on what we're learning on the phone. It is not uncommon, and I'm not embellishing this, it is not uncommon, a daily occurrence, somebody in my center has given CPR over the phone. Unique group of cats in there, God bless them. How many areas would you see that people thrive on the opportunity to deliver a baby on the phone? Most people would be running for the fences with something like that. But they thrive on that kind of excitement, that kind of intrigue. And to hear them giving CPR on the phone based on the training they get through the Pro-QA disciplines, and do it at the same tone I'm talking to you, amazes me, and I've been in the industry since '80. So extremely sophisticated center. I would encourage any and all of you to come down and take a look, see what it's all about. I could certainly facilitate that, or absent that, that little vignette on the internet can answer that for you. I have year-end reports, it's full of data and stuff, suffice to say, we're busy. Calls from '20 to '21, we're up 33%. 911 is up 22%, and it averages out to 519 calls a day. And that's, we do not have, nor will we have, a phone tree because the arrangements made by the department chiefs when we developed was that the calls are going to go through. We're not going to have a situation where somebody ties into these notorious phone trees that we all despise from time to time. Because very often, probably too often, we get emergent calls through the admin lines because in the day and age of these cell phones, people no longer dial a number. They push a button that says police, and what they don't, or police, or fire, or EMS, and what they don't realize is in the background, they've typed in what was an admin number. So that still comes to us, and we still treat it the way it needs to be treated. But all the calls will be covered. That's just the way it's going to be handled. There might come a day where we can filter them off, but that's not going to happen anytime soon. I've been talking, talking, talking. Any questions, I can try to answer for you. Yes, ma'am?
Considering I'm naive, I don't have a background in fire or police services whatsoever, and I'm assuming that there are a lot of people probably looking at us on YouTube, et cetera, because this leads to, this meeting goes on YouTube, okay? So walk me through. I call you, and what happens? Does it, I say, this is my emergency, we're here in Bisbee, you're in Sierra Vista, and the operator that picks up that call does what?
Okay. I mean, just a smidgen of background to start off, but we have, because of large agencies, we have Sierra Vista, Law 1, that's a channel. County, Law 1, that's a channel. Fire East and Fire West, that's the four primary channels. And depending on where you're at, that's what the frequency they talk on. There's a bunch of others out there that they can also multi-select on, but those are, that's the base. In the event I had four dispatchers on, one would take each. Okay, and they'd have that, what they call it, in their ear, and then they'd all answer phones, depending on how they came in. Okay, you call in, and there's, there's not traditional phones like we've grown to understand over the years. They're headsets and buttons, and an entire monitor full of buttons which represents phone lines. Phone starts to ring, and they can tell by the type of ring, whether it's an admin or a 911. They push a button, and there's a prerecorded, that they record themselves in their own voice, that asks for the address of the emergency. So the person, first things, they give that address. With that, the dispatcher is listening and typing it in, and the computer, CAD, the computer-aided dispatch, sees that address and through the GIS validates the address, drops down in the menu, they click on that address, and it populates the address, it identifies the area of responsibility, what unit, what agency, and plots the time and date and all that kind of stuff as well. That all goes within the first comments of before you've talked to a person. With that, the person comes on, and then they ask the nature of your emergency. Often, they've gotten it in the first burst that the person calls in anyways. So with that, with the software system, they put in what's called a nature code. Like for a fire, for instance, all you got to do is type FI, and it's going to see fire, and it's going to give them a dropdown menu, and then they're going to get the nature of the fire, they're going to click on that, and then that gives the dispatcher then, and this is the training they give in, is Pro-QA for fire. It automatically goes to that, and it gives them dropdowns of question after question after question. And that is not to say that help is not, it's already going to be on its way, but that's where we're able to give that additional information to the units underway. So it's a number of questions. Some of them admittedly seem kind of mundane because their, the program, the software program, Pro-QA, was developed by emergency room physicians, paramedics, seasoned cops, fire meters for years gone by. And they have refined these questions, and you can tell, and anybody's been in management can appreciate, they're done with liability default or error on the side of caution. Better to ask a question that might sound redundant rather than not ask a question that have a hole. Okay? So all these questions come down, and then this, like I said, it's called a send point. After we've established the nature of the problem, who's calling, validated it, which with the aid of the computer, it gets to what's called that send point. And the minute they click that button, the dispatcher over across the way from it who's on Fire, well, Fire East, is saying. It comes up on their screen. Now, there's some collaboration in the office where they'll talk over their shoulder, and they'll say, "Hey, Mike, I just sent you a call." Okay? Mike looks up, he sees it, clicks it, dispatches the fire unit, EMS unit. And when they get into their unit, it is on their screen, all the information that has been gathered to that point, and it will continually update as they're wrapped. And we typically, unless it's not that emergent, will stay on the phone with that person until the paramedics, we can hear the paramedics in the background. So that's the major difference between the Pro-QA and the priority dispatches. Used to be, okay, we've got the ambulance on the way. Now, you've got somebody with, regrettably, I've had a number of instances just since I've been there, where our dispatcher, my folks, are the last voice somebody heard as they passed. And we can prove it through the digital recording. On the contrary, I have numbers of examples where my folks have saved lives through their instruction, one of which was covered by the news channels, had to do with the cardiac emergency over in St. David, which coincided with this film by a security camera. They put our digital recording together with the camera and the initial phone call, and you can build what turned out to be a real-life vignette where a guy went down at a construction site, and our dispatcher walked the person through CPR, and you see on the camera where the medics were at. And in that instance, that gentleman came into CCOM, met the dispatcher, the TV channel did their thing as well. So we see both ends of the spectrum through this additional elevated level of service with respect to the training. All highly computerized, and it's just, it's an ongoing process to keep those skill sets up. That's the encyclopedia version of your questions, right?
Do you think you have anything? Are you throwing it?
No.
Other comments, discussions? Real quickly, one question. I know there's an operations committee that comprises of people that are, are we going to have a seat on that?
Yes.
Or maybe a part-time?
Yes, you do. Mr. Mayor, full-time municipalities joining actually have a seat on the board. Part-time municipalities and entities are on the ops committee, yes. That's, right now, that is being chaired by Chief Scott Bolina with the sheriff's office. That was Chief Siemens with Friday before that. But yes, you would have a seat on that committee.
I didn't see it exactly on the contract, so I would ask that.
That was, if I might, Ms. Mayor, as I explained to Mr. Park when we got this started, the original IGA that was developed back in '18, we are six meetings into a rewrite with that. The new one has not been codified, so we're bound to the old one still, but it is in rewrite right now. We're, a number of significant changes. The most obvious one is when it was set up, County of Cochise was the fiscal agent, and now, in fact, the city of Sierra Vista is the fiscal agent. And it's, the stuff is split up in there, I won't worry about that, but that's how it's arranged.
I'll tell you why I support it. I mean, when I started my career as firefighter, I was a dispatcher, but they made us dispatch. This is in the '70s. We got to do night shifts and the rest of it, and it was very life-opening, not only to go on the calls, but also be one of the persons sending them. And it was, it was by hook and crook, and the old telephone ringing, and you're pushing buttons and trying to get stuff to happen. And over my career through Salt Lake County Sheriff's Office and the Salt Lake County Fire Department, we, they integrated, and we went to the same system, an integrated system. And was it perfect? No. For almost a year, we struggled back and forth with getting everything, the gloves worked out, but we worked hard on it, and actually became much better. And the reason, what I really appreciated on it, because the sheriffs were grounded on one set of radios, we were on another, and we were going up the canyons towards on search and rescue, and we were doing, and literally from their console, they could tie us all together on everybody else's radio, so we're all on one system, we're all talking to each other, all knowing what everybody's doing. Before, we were just flying blind, would have to ask the dispatcher, "Well, what did the sheriff say?" And she'd have to relay it. "Well, what about search and rescue?" But when you can talk together, it works so much better. So that was, that was my experience with it and why I support it, because I think that's a, you know, it's just the way to go, let alone the computerizing section of it and so on. So, yeah, I think that's, you know, that's a matter of where we go. But I will tell you one funny little story that someone told me, because you have been dispatching for nights for a little while. So this person is very used to our old system, called in and said, "Oh, I got a problem down here in the gulch." And they go, and you're this, one of your dispatchers goes, "Okay, and where's that?" "I'm right next door to Elmo's." And your dispatcher goes, "What's Elmo's?" For us Bisbee guys, what's Elmo's is, no, it's not, it's not a character on TV, but anyway, yeah. So there's a learning curve, and people need to understand there's an address, not just the name of a place. But it all worked out fine, but this person relayed that to me and said, "You know, I called instead of Elmo's." I didn't know.
I mean, if I might share one other thing, and this goes toward the, not the advertisers, but ESA's has a place to 911. Our center, and even your center, if somebody calls in on 911, the true backbone of 911, we can plot and track that phone in an emergent situation. Getting that message to folks is critical toward getting proper usage of the 911 system. A number of instances, particularly up on I-10, where somebody's going off the road in the night, they don't know where they're at, but they've been able to call in, and we can plot it and send help. In the mountains, the hikers and stuff, they get lost. Again, we can land a pedo on their head based on laps and longs if they use the 911 system. If they're on the admin lines, we cannot do that.
They can't block their longitude and latitude on their cell phones.
And then, if I might, sir, the chief was here, we were talking about the station of learning, I can speak to that for just a second, if you...
Oh, yeah, for the fire department?
Yes.
Yes.
The county approved funding for the... The county approved funding for the station alerting systems throughout the county, 34 stations throughout the county. And this is what amounts to a triple redundant alerting system that's standardized. It would come through CCOM, that in that continuum of taking a case, when it gets to the send point, the computer would take that over and send it. And if the computer being programmed would know where, who's going, what they're going, what their apparatus are going with and stuff like that. It's computer, all programmed into this. It's an established system that's been up and running for quite some time in larger municipalities and is being brought to this county.
So it knows that other units are out of service because they're doing whatever, so it keeps track of them?
It's intuitive like that. Now admittedly, much like any response plans that any fire department has, it's gotta be low bid. But that's what this is all about. It has all kinds of additional stuff built into it in terms of individual stations having the ability to modify their tones and their lighting and their, all this kind of stuff for their stations. And that relates to firefighter help in long-term type situations.
It's a little shocking, you're dead at night, sleeping and the lights full bright and loud horns. Now they actually bring them up slower.
And in some instances, if it's compartmentalized, that's why it won't wake up the fire teams, the MEs need to go on, vice versa. Yes.
Sorry, if I'm going out of medical, you're gonna be okay. All right, we're done now, are we? Okay. I will make the motion that we authorize, oh, I'm sorry, get back online. That we approve the subscriber agreement between the city of Bisbee and CCOM for regional 911 communications. I have a motion, a second, for item number 12 on the agenda, authorizing the subscriber agreement. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much, chief.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Sure, oh, chief. One more?
So I have a question. Since we dispatch for public works, how is that going to work now?
So again, there's a lot of things with this, this process that are gonna be growing pains, if you will, to a certain extent. Now, we have some ideas in place right now. Right now, if they do get a call for public works after hours, they have both MAPS number and they have LOVAS number at CCOM. So those calls will still be made. The challenge with some things are some of the little things that we do for the public that other agencies sometimes don't do. It can be a little bit of a challenge. We had to modify some things for our bus drivers because our bus drivers usually come into the station at night and drop off their, their collections from the bus and there's, the dispatcher's not there to let them in anymore. So we've had to kinda make some modifications to some things and we're getting through those things. But as far as the fire last night is a prime example. When that fire kicked off around 9:30, 10 o'clock last night, CCOM handled all of those operations on the radio side for both police and fire. Of course, Chief Richardson and myself were up there handling our sides respectively. So we took on a lot of those communications for them, but they're still the funnel point. And keep in mind, I'm talking to CCOM on Cochise County Law and Order, the same channel that the Sheriff's Department and the whole county is using, the same channel that Tombstone Marshal's using with Chupacines. We're all talking on the same channel. And with this event, as big as that was going off, we still had perfect, I mean, the radio communications are never perfect, but we still had very good radio communications. Somebody might be talking, you might have to wait a second for them to finish before you ask for what you need, but those, those wait times were very minimal and we were, they were receptive to us and our requests. And they got everything I needed and asked for when, in terms of volunteers, additional law enforcement personnel in case we had to evacuate. We, we still had that same type of service that we would have been provided by our own dispatchers. It's just, just talking on the same radio, just somebody else is answering. So it's, I think that last month, that fire last night was a good example of the fact that, yes, it does work. Again, there's little things, little tweaks here and there that we would like. Sometimes we can't change everything in the whole county just because this is the way Bisbee wants it. We, we have to understand that as well, this is a regional center. So we can't, we can't get that tailored treatment. But we're gonna get quality service and we're paying, we're paying for that in a huge cost reduction overall. So, and during the daytime, when we have our most amount of administrative phone traffic at the police station, when we get the phone calls like people asking where's the best place to go eat, tourist questions like that, we get those often at the police department. By, by handling that ourselves in Bisbee for Monday through Friday during those times, we can still provide that unique information that dispatcher CCOM might not have. They might not know where a good restaurant in Bisbee is. Our dispatchers know, or at least they can give some information, where are you at? Okay, these are the options for you. You know, when I dispatched 20 years ago, I never failed, I got phone calls all the time asking what was the number of Pete's house? That was the big one. We don't need to burden CCOM with, with those, those types of calls. We can handle those ourselves and provide that service during the times where we expect to get them the most. So I still think that this hybrid model provides the biggest bang for the buck for the city, but also we still keep, we still keep a full-time dispatcher. We still have the ability to provide some of that service. And when we have those calls that are city, we can handle it ourselves when the city's open. And it works out pretty good. And we've done it for the last four weeks and it's worked out well. And we did it about a year, 18 months ago, when COVID hit us really hard. We had to go and, and they helped us then during nights flipping the switch and covering us for, I think, three weeks or so, four weeks, until we got our, our staff healthy and back to work again. So this is not the first time that we've relied on them and they've been there to help us out. They're helping us now and now after tonight, we'll be, we'll be on the books and we can, we're official clients of CCOM now, so, you know, it's, it's a good thing, so. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We will move on to the last agenda item, this is item number 13. It's discussion of possible action to rescind ordinance O-2201. This is authorizing an exchange and transfer of real property with Bisbee Bone Inc. located at 201 Tombstone Canyon, Bisbee, Arizona. I ask that this be put up before council. As you may or may not be aware, there was a referendum that was, got out for signatures that possibly put this ordinance to a vote of the people. Upon reviewing it, a little background information here is this was nothing more than a way to clean up a real problem area for some time. There was a land interference that was going on up by the High Desert Market where a piece of property was blocking the ability for us to want to install electric car chargers. So land exchange would, this would have done that. Upsetting by one individual who went and gathered some signatures. Upon reviewing this and looking at it, but realized that doesn't really have to happen to make this work. It was just a matter of cleaning up something that, that was here before I became mayor. And so really, this is a cost saving. There's no need to send it to the voters, have to pay for an additional voting referendum with the county, putting it into a packet to send out to all the voters. We can work that out otherwise. There's other things that we can do to still make the chargers happen and they'll still go ahead. We'll just do it in a different way instead of doing a land exchange. So by, I'm asking that the council consider that we just rescind the ordinance and then it's a new point. I'm going to take a little personal privilege because there was an article put in the Bisbee Observer and I'll gonna take some, some moment because my name was mentioned in there more than once about what was said. And it said, "This lot of city, the city was received in trade seems to have been illegally created." Well, it wasn't illegally created, there was, it is a parcel number and anybody can go on the GS, the GIS county website and look at 10361349D. It's a parcel, is being paid by taxes, somebody owns it. So it isn't some illegitimate piece of parcel that was being traded. So that was a complete fabrication in this article. The trade was actually gonna trade, Bone had 312 square feet of property. We were gonna trade them for 225. So they were at, we were actually giving more property than what, what they were gonna give us. They never mention here that another parking spot was sold to a friend of the mayor. I wasn't even mayor at that point, it was sold a year before I was even considering running for mayor. So again, that was, that's another inaccuracy in this letter to the editor. And, you know, the final situation here, there's no big, huge conspiracy. It was just a matter that it seemed like a good way to clear things up so that it would be easier to put in electric chargers. And that's about $35,000 to $40,000 worth of electric chargers that we would get for under, about $4,000 APS. I've been working with them for months and months and months to get those electric charger cars coming. We might as well be ready for them. They're already here and people are looking for a way to, to come to Bisbee and charge it. They would pull up, they would plug in, we would be charging them by the hour for the amount of kilowatts that they get. And then that's income coming into the city. So APS will install them free of charge. They will, they will be there for public use and the APS will maintain them for five years and then just turn them over to us. So it seemed like a really good deal and seemed like this is a way to make it clean. So without that, just to help clarify some of this article from Mr. Laws, that a lot of mistruth has come out about this whole thing. So anyway, this will just rescind it and take care of the action that we know for the action needed. So with that, I'm opening for discussions, any questions? Okay, I'll entertain motion.
I move.
Go ahead.
I move to rescind ordinance 0-22-01, authorizing the exchange and transfer of real property with Bisbee Bone Inc. located near 201 Tombstone Canyon.
A second now.
The motion is second, to rescind ordinance O-2201, authorizing the exchange and transfer of real property. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes. Now on the slate, salute. All right. Last item is item 14, city manhood.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I do have a few things and, you know, thank you for, or kudos to the library. I think they worked hard to get where they are and I think this is something that'll be the feather in the cap of the entire community should it, should it, should it happen. So most of what I have tonight is related to the budget. As you know, we are going to start doing our budget meetings next Monday. I believe we've set Monday at 5:30 for the first one. In the meantime, I am still working, Carrie's, Carrie to the bone, trying to get everything refined as much as we can before we give it to you. It will be available for you to pick up in paper form on Thursday. I, you know, you can choose your poison on how you wanna look at the budget, but I find it a lot easier to get the paper version because you're talking a hundred pages and it's a lot to go through and when you wanna compare back and forth, it's a lot easier. Even though we all don't wanna burn, we're cut down, I shouldn't say burned, tonight, should I? Cut down any more trees in the process, I, I would like to make sure that you also know that in a bit of a departure from the way I have traditionally done these budget meetings, you're gonna have the, the first draft of the budget on Thursday. That will give you a few days to pick through it and, and get yourself ready for Monday. In the past, for too many years, we have sort of gone through that budget one line at a time. I'm slowly changing my method of doing things and presenting the budget perhaps because maybe it's because I'm getting older. I don't know if I can explain it any other way, but what we plan to do on Monday, and of course, usually the first night, we deal with the general fund and we're pretty much done for the night by the time. We get, because that's the bulk of the pages in the budget. And so we will, Carrie and I will make a presentation on what the general fund looks like, where some of the changes might be, where some things we're doing better, some things are not doing so well and, and our method of dealing with those issues. We talked about a lot of them when we had our strategy meeting a couple of weeks ago. So there won't be any real surprises, so. But there was a pleasant surprise and this document is dated April 15th, but I don't think it got till yesterday. We finally got the state shared revenue report that you're used to seeing in March. And, well, let's just say that delay was worth it because our actual, the four state shared revenues that we received from the governor have gone up by $400,000. That is very well changed. As you recall, about six months ago, when the 2020 official census numbers came out, they immediately ripped $100,000 out of our budget. And so now that makes the net gain 300, but I'll take it every day. So, so, you know, that doesn't make it easier to do the budget, that just makes it easier to pare down. You know, because as, as you know, we always start out with more requests than we have money to hand. So that's one. Blue Cross and Blue Shield, the core part of our health insurance plan. We were expecting originally a 12% increase in premiums through the hard work of the staff, mostly Joel. We have negotiated this down to 7%. It's not great because it's an increase, but it's better than 12 and 5% better than 12. So as you know, part of that costs the city bearers and part of that costs the employee bearers based on their particular level of participation, whether they're insuring spouse or children or both. So that, that, that makes it a little bit more livable. And all of the other features of the healthcare plan, the vision, the devil, the life and the employee assistance plan have all remained at their current levels for next year. So, so that is, that is welcome news. Anytime a healthcare provider holds their cost for more than one year in a row, that's a, that's a win. So I, I mean, it's not a win that makes me smile, it's a win that knows we have to do a lot to get to remain that way. So the budget meetings again will start Monday. They will be at 5:30 in this room. They will continue until we're finished. We've, we scheduled four nights for that. And I think last year we went three nights, two good nights and they'll finish up the third.
two good nights and then finish up the third. You know, I'm, I'm not making any predictions, I don't want anybody to feel rushed, I'll play the thing especially since we do have a couple of newer folks on the, on the city council to which this document, it will be seen for a first time, so. But, you know, we put a lot of time and effort into making this thing work. We think what we'll be presenting you is a workable document for the next year. As you know, the, the general fund usually shows in the neighborhood of three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in excess of the revenues that we generate. But as you also know, we rarely ever spend the entire budget. In fact, the budgets that I've been involved in here in Bisbee, we've never gone over. So, so now, the key isn't to, to, to authoring a good budget, the key is to managing that budget throughout the year. And as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago at our strategy meeting, I, my hat's off to all of the departments, because they, they did put in a lot of effort in order to make sure that we ended up in a positive sense. You know, there's still a couple of months left in the fiscal year, but we think we're going to end this fiscal year about four hundred thousand dollars in revenue in excess of expenses, so that's, that's a big win in attorney money. So, so I don't want to say anymore because then I'll be getting into the budget meeting, I want to say that on Monday. So please do come by, pick it up on Thursday, and that way you'll have plenty of time to review it before we start. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you for that. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The votes made, I just have a salute, we are adjourned.